Good evening, I'm calling this workshop to order. The time is precisely 5:30 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. We have a forum of the Fort Worth ISD Board present. The following Board members are present virtually and I will now call each of their names in the order of their districts. District 3 trustee Quinton Phillips, good evening.
Good evening Vice President Jackson, Quinton Phillips, present representing District 3.
Thank you. District 4 trustee Daphne Brookins.
Good evening Vice President Jackson, Daphne Brookins, presenting District 4.
District 5 trustee CJ Evans.
Good evening, present.
District 6 trustee Andor.
Good evening First Vice President Jackson, this is Andor representing District 6.
District 7 trustee Norman Robbins.
Good evening Vice President Jackson, this is Norman Robbins representing District 7.
District 8 trustee Anail Luabanos has a family medical emergency and is going to try to join us right now. Trustee Luabanos.
Good evening, Anail Luabanos, representing District 8, present.
Great, thank you so much. District 9 trustee Ashley Paz.
Ashley Paz here representing District 9 tonight, happy to be here.
Thank you. On March 16th, 2020 Governor Abbott. I love this, my script is cut off, so you guys hold on for just a second, I'm gonna have to repair this. It'll be done in a jiffy. On March 16th, 2020 Governor Abbott temporarily suspended certain open meetings requirements imposed by the Open Meetings Act to slow the spread of COVID-19. This action permits meetings subject to the Open Meetings Act to be hosted by telephone or video conference. This workshop is being broadcast live via Spectrum Charter Channel 192, the Fort Worth ISD Live channel on YouTube and a link provided in the agenda. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this workshop has been posted online for at least 72 hours. One, although members of the Board are not gathered in a general, a central physical location, we do have a forum in attendance at this workshop by video conference or telephone call. We are meeting by use of Zoom software application which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person Board meeting, members of the public who have followed the instruction on the workshop notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. All other meeting procedures will adhere to Board adopted procedures to be kept practical. An audio recording of this workshop is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787 or by email at toma, T-O-M-A, at oag.texas, T-E-X-A-S, dot gov, G-O-V. At this time, I would like to call the public meeting order, we're moving on to the public hearing which is now called to order and I will turn it over to Dr. Scrivener at this time, Dr. Scrivener?
Very much Ms. Jackson, at this time, we would like to present our PowerPoint on public hearing regarding proposed tax rates for the 2021 school year. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Michael Ball.
Thank you Dr. Scrivener, thank you Vice President Jackson, it's a privilege to participate in this, in this meeting, to propose the, the tax rate that will fund the district operations for the coming year. And this is the time for the public hearing and we wanna, if we can go to the next, next slide, we'll, we'll just jump right into the chart that depicts the proposed tax rate. It's really comprised of two parts, the maintenance and operations rate and the interest in sinking rate. And the proposed tax rate is of course expressed as, as a rate per $100 in taxable value and it is as follows. The maintenance and operations rate that is proposed is $1 and 8.64. And the interest in sinking rate is unchanged from the prior year at 29.2 cents per $100 in taxable value and that provides a total proposed tax rate of $1.37.84 for $100 in taxable value. And the proposed M&amp;O rate or maintenance and operations rate includes an additional enrichment rate that will provide funding along with state foundation school program aid to pay for the day-to-day operating expenses of the district. The proposed INS rate provides funding to make the payments on bonds that have been issued to pay for voter-approved capital improvement projects. It remains unchanged from the previous year. The chart shows a comparison of the proposed 2021 rates with the adopted rates for the 2019-20 fiscal year. It illustrates the reduction in the rate provided by Senate Bill 2 from the 86th Legislature. This reduction is based on the relationship of the local growth in taxable property values compared to the statewide average growth rate. The Fort Worth ISD values have increased about 2.1% compared to the statewide average of 4.5%. This results in a reduction of 1.3 cents in the M&amp;O rate in accordance with the provisions of Senate Bill 2. The administration is proposing an additional 11 cents on the maintenance and operations rate as previously stated. The proposed INS rate remains unchanged at 29.2 cents. And this would support the, the operations of the district for the, the coming fiscal year. So if we could go to the next slide, this will discuss the benefit to the district. And, and this chart illustrates that the additional local tax revenue would tunnel about $44 million. And since the public school funding system is based in part on local tax effort, those additional revenues would result in about $22 million in additional state dollars coming into our community. So it's about a 50% match for the, the local collections paid by, by our community. So if we could go to the next slide, we'll, we'll talk about why do we need the additional revenue? And, and what we've listed here is the, to, the ability to enhance the teacher incentive allotment. This proposal would enable the district to be more competitive in attracting and retaining the best teachers. And it would provide a better campus safety and security. We're seeing that the cost of personal protective equipment such as masks, face shields, hand sanitizer, Plexiglas barriers and similar items appear to be an ongoing cost of operating a safe school environment for our students and employees. This will also fund additional measures to sanitize campuses and buses such as fogging machines and additional custodial labor and supplies. And the, the third thing of focus is technology and connectivity. As you know, students without technology need hotspots and devices such as Chromebooks in order to access the virtual learning environment. And methods to provide broadband internet access are also being explored in partnership with our philanthropic community. In the next slide, we'll, we'll talk about the cost to homeowners. And the, this chart provides the average value of a taxable residence in Fort Worth ISD in the, in the top row there of $163,432. And that's based on the certified property value roll as of July 25th, 2020, received from the Tarrant Appraisal District. The cost for that average residence is about $13 per month of this proposal. The chart also shows the cost for homes valued at $250,000 or about $20 per month, $300,000 would be about $24 per month and $350,000 home would, would be about $28 per month. And then highlighted there at the bottom of that slide is a very important thing to, to note and that is that the, the residential homestead owners over age 65 who have filed for the exemption would not pay any additional tax as a, as a result of this proposal because their tax amount is frozen at the level that it was in the year they turned 65. And so in summary, this, this proposal provides about a 50% match from the state which would bring in additional dollars to our local community based on the effort of, on payment from Fort Worth ISD property owners. And as previously said, the cost of, to the homeowners ranges from about $13 per month for the average home up to, to the $28 amount shown for the, the home valued at, at $350,000. And again, the, the homeowner age 65 or over would not pay any additional tax as a result of, of this proposal. And Madam Vice President, be, be happy to answer any questions that trustees might have and, and otherwise, this would be the time, I think, to go to the, the public.
At this time, do we have any questions? Trustee Dar.
Thank you Vice President Jackson, um, thank you Mr. Ball for that presentation, I appreciate it. I, as a parent, this, but my parent had on right now of students in the district, I can most certainly get behind quality teachers in the classroom. I can also get behind safety and security, I want my kids to be safe and secure. And I certainly know that there is a need for additional technology in, not only in our schools, but in our homes and the connectivity thesis is huge right now. Um, and, and I'm, and I support Fort Worth ISD's efforts to make sure that every student has a computer and a hotspot and some, or internet connectivity, however that internet connectivity is achieved. I'm, I also know that purchasing a bunch of hotspots is a Band-Aid and I know I'm not telling anybody on this board something that they don't already know. Um, what, would, would any of these funds be used to provide long-term solutions such as towers and, and connectivity for communities as opposed to just hotspots for homes?
Yes, um, Mike, if, if I may, um, we are very fortunate to partner with several nonprofits and philanthropic foundations. The Tarrant To &amp; Through Initiative has looked at broadband subscription by, ranked by households and the high concentration of households who have children but live in an area where there is not reliable hotspots, I excuse you, reliable internet access, reliable connectivity. Several of those, uh, zip codes are either in East Fort Worth or, or in South Fort Worth. The 760101, 76104 zip codes as well as 761014 and 115. Those are, those are areas in which we are looking to partner with the business community, with philanthro, philanthropy whereby we could invest alongside of those organizations in digital towers that cover about a seven mile by seven mile radius with regard to much more reliable broadband. So, so yes, hotspots in the short term, these funds would be recurring funds every year. So we could address our short-term needs but then also engage in some strategic planning as you suggest, so we invest in our students in, in the long run. There are smaller districts in, in our vicinity, in fact, one just to the west of us, a district of five or six schools that has one digital tower that, that served the entire district. And we think we could invest and do several particularly in those zip codes that are, that currently and historically have been underserved.
Thank you Dr. Scrivener, I appreciate that answer and that's, that's not just service for students, that is service for our community.
Exactly.
For our community, for parents who need access to. It's hard to register your kids when you don't have access to the internet, so. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that answer and I appreciate that presentation.
Thank you for that follow-up point to also trustee Dar, because we know that well over two-thirds of job applications now require online applications, so this, you're absolutely right, this not only would, would, would help our students but the entire family.
Trustee Paz, did I see that you? Please.
Yes, thank you Vice President Jackson, um, Mr. Ball, thank you so much for that presentation. Um, and I am, I'm personally excited to hear that, of the possibility of investing in broadband and the zip codes, as I live in 76104, uh, big up to the south side, we, we need better broadband because, um, and it's, um, it's tough, it's tough over here. So my question actually is about our current financial situation. Um, Mr. Ball, can you talk about the money? So right now, we are currently losing money back to the state. Um, so the 22 million per year that you have is increased revenue from the state, that not only that, that we would not only be increasing that revenue but we would not, there's an additional bucket of revenue that we wouldn't be losing back to the state, am I correct? Is that understanding?
Great question trustee Paz, the, the district is, is operating at, at a deficit, meaning we're, we're, it, it's costing more to operate on a day-to-day basis than what our revenue stream is, is forecast to be for the coming years. And so what, what this proposal would do is obviously it, it would result in some increased local tax collections. And it, and it's really a 50 cent match on the dollar for every additional dollar in local tax collections that are, that are achieved by the district, the, the state would contribute an additional 50 cents. So our local taxpayers pay a dollar but we would have a dollar 50 to utilize in operating the district. And that all together would bring in about $62 million, I'm sorry, about $66 million per year, 44 of that from local taxpayers and 22 of that from the state.
Okay, and, um, and how, do you, do you have the number of how much we have lost in federal funding over the last few years?
I, I do not, but I certainly can, can research that and, and get back to you with that. If you're talking about the, the CARES Act funding, you know, that, that was about $29 million that, that we're receiving, that the state then reduced our funding accordingly. And so, uh, so actually some of that will, will go to private schools in the area. But that's, that's the, the number that I have tip of my tongue and if there's other federal funding that we need to research, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about just our general, um, just the general pot of money that we get from different federal grants has reduced over the last few years. I want to say in like the last five years, it's to the tune of like $45 million?
Possibly.
Yeah, I do not, but I'll, I'll certainly research that and provide it to you trustee.
Any other comments from our trustees? Trustee Brookins?
So, um, I know that we are selling our properties and we're getting funding from that. Um, could you explain to our communities, um, the difference of where those pockets of money are going?
Absolutely, uh, trustee Brookins, I'd be happy to do that, that, that's a great observation. There, there really are, just like we talked about, there are two components to the tax rate. Those, those two components fund two separate buckets of money, if you will, and, and the, the bucket of money that we call our maintenance and operations fund is really for the day-to-day operations of the district. If you think about your home budget, that, that'd be like your, your salary or your, your income stream, uh, that, that you, you pay for your groceries and your utility bills and, and all the things that the typical household spends. The, what we call the interest in sinking fund provides for the capital projects of the district, the buildings and major renovations and those type of things. And to kind of compare that to our home budgets, that fund is somewhat like our home mortgage, there, there's very few of us who, who have the financial wherewithal to, to write a check for our home and the district finds itself in the same spot. So in order to provide the buildings and capital projects needed to, to operate the district, those are financed with long-term debt just like most of us do our primary residents. And so when we sell excess real estate, that money has to go back into that capital projects fund and cannot be used to, to pay for the day-to-day expenses like salaries and the utility costs and those types of things. And so, but the law actually requires that we keep those two buckets of money separate. And so I hope that's adequately addressed your, your question, uh, trustee Brookins.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? I, I would go back to the question from Ms. Dar with regard to, uh, your answer Dr. Scrivener, and that was the zip codes that you will be serving with Wi-Fi towers. Uh, you said they would serve seven to eight miles out, I presume that's a radius?
Yes.
So the zip, the zip codes you stated are directly adjacent to zip codes such as 76105, that's the most impoverished zip code in Tarrant County. Can we get a list of, of the, how they, these radiate out or what the radius is of the amplification of the bandwidth? I don't know, that's, that's way out of my line.
No, no, absolutely, that's a great question and we have these data actually broken down by percentage of households with children who, who do not have broadband, without broadband. So, so this, I think you just said 76105, um, that is 41% of the households there are without broadband and, and that is why this is a, an absolute necessity to invest in our community like any other utility that, that we, that we needed our home in today's world and moving forward. A broadband subscription certainly is, is, is at that same level. But yes, we'll provide this to the Board tomorrow and, uh, broken down by zip code as well as the percentage of households with children without broadband.
Right, thank you so much. And if we don't have any further comments from the Board?
I have some, Vice President Jackson.
Thank you, trustee Phillips?
Yeah, so, um, you know, in the spirit, in, in the spirit of transparency, like, you know, we've been throwing around and we've been trying to make sure that we're ushering in that, uh, this culture of that we are, you know, being transparent and trying to make sure we have accurate information and people are being communicated well with. So I want to ma, I want to make sure that I know what's going on here all the way. Cause I do, I love the presentation and I don't want it to be a presentation that one day bites us in the butt but that it actually, actually withholding what it is that we're saying and we're doing here. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is, is that by, what's being presented today is that we, um, that we will be helping with, we'll be helping with our technology to be able to boost, boost technology out to the students, um, that we would be helping to, to, with, with Wi, with, with the towers, cell towers to be able to try to get, um, better Wi-Fi access, uh, to those who most need it. Um, I'm hearing, um, I'm, I'm hearing that this will help with our safety and I'm hearing that this will help with PPE and everything as far as being able to keep, uh, our students, families, teachers, educators safe. And I'm, and I'm hearing that, um, that those who, those who make the most would have to pay the most, right? Um, and I'm also hearing that those over 65 will not have to, will not have to pay. So I'm hearing all, am I hearing all of that correct? And then as I'm hearing that correctly, what we decide upon today is not necessarily what happens but that the, the, what we're actually deciding is for it to be presented to the public for them, for them to decide upon that. I'm trying to make sure I got all that clear, uh, as we move forward.
I think you've summed it up well trustee Phillips.
Be sounding too good to be true sometime, I gotta make sure.
Things, things exactly are what were in the presentation and, um, and, and the, the rate would, that's one of the things on our agenda tonight is the rate would require that, that the, if the Board adopts the rate that's recommended, uh, it would trigger the requirement to call an election on the general election day for the voters to ratify this rate. So I, I think you summed it up very well, thank you.
And, so this, so this, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry trustee Phillips, and one more thing, one more piece that, um, that I just don't want us to brush over, uh, the third leg to the stool of this additional investment will be the, it to enhance our teacher incentive allotment, allowing our best teachers, uh, to serve our students, uh, in incentivizing our best teachers to serve our students in the greatest, much like we're doing right now with the leadership academies, take that initiative to scale but also incentivize the teachers based on student growth and, and achievement, uh, much like what we've talked about before with our, um, school performance framework. Where, uh, we identify, uh, schools into different tiers, those who are achieving at acceptable levels, they've earned some autonomy, uh, those that are struggling, we're gonna double down and reinvest in those schools with the additional, uh, uh, resources that for decades they have lacked.
All right, and so it's sounding beautiful. And so then that last, so I guess my final question, uh, is, I know Mike, you spoke about the state kicking in, you know, the, you know, the 50%, you know, we, we get, we spend a dollar or others spend a dollar, state kicks in 50. Is this a statute, this in writing somewhere, could we hold a state to that? Even that sounds too good to be true today, actually go after kick this in, so what provision is there that makes that occur to what we can hold that to be?
That, that's, that's a great point trustee Phillips, it is in statute, it, it's based on the, the funding formulas, um, in, in state law, the current funding formulas and we do have to remind ourselves that the, the legislature does come back in January and so all of that is subject to change, but under current law, yes, the, the system is really based on what they call tax effort. And so the more local taxes that are collected, um, the more the state will, will provide. Uh, it's called tier-two funding is really what, what the, uh, provision in the statute calls it.
Absolutely, yeah, now we can go with what's on the books at the moment, so. All right, good stuff, no, I appreciate that, great, great presentation, man, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, any other, any other, Ms. Trustee Brookins?
Um, yeah, I, I wanted to go back to that one slide because I went by it kind of quick about the safety and security, does that also include cyber security? Because I, I've been hearing a lot of talk on TV about that, um, with our students getting hotspot and Chromebooks and all of that, that, um, we're more susceptible to get, um, another fiber break? Sure that, um, where it says security, does that include that as well?
It does, Ms. trustee Brookins, we, we have taken great measures already to enhance the security of our network. Um, and we, we are constantly being vigilant about that, we've, we've, and it, it probably wouldn't be appropriate to publicly state all the things that we've done to enhance the security of our network, but, um, we, we have done a lot of measures. But we have done a lot of measures, implemented a lot of measures to enhance that security. And so those, some of those measures that we have done will require ongoing costs that could be paid with the proceeds from this proposal. And certainly, if the board needs more specifics on the security measures we've put in place, I think that would be an appropriate discussion for a closed session and not an open meeting.
Thank you.
Any others?
Yes, vice president Jackson, I'd like to make a comment. And I feel that I may have deceived some people. I've, last week is recently when we were chatting, I said that I was very much in favor of the 11 cent increase and going to the voters and asking for that. But after talking to some people, as recently as just a few moments before this meeting started, I am now not in favor of doing so. And the reason is that, as I mentioned last week, I think that the state will pretty much gut public education in the next session. There are only two buckets from which they can get large amounts of money, and that's public ed and healthcare, both of which are critical to the success of our state. I'm concerned if we go to the voters this November and ask for this 11 penny increase that'll generate $66 million, that we may be gutted by the state next spring to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars, necessitating us to come back to the voters again next year for an additional tax ratification election, which I think would be very difficult. On top of that, some of the items that are included in our 11 cent increase are really more capital investment kinds of expenses rather than operating expenses, that being the towers that are needed to increase the broadband in our most critical parts of town. But yet, again, I think that that falls out of the range of an operational expense. I also feel that it would be difficult for us to do this now, to do this again next year. I think it would be more prudent for us to see how much cutting we have to endure next spring and then go to the voters to try to make up that difference rather than doing a little bit now and a little bit later. So I typically, when I change my mind on a situation, like to give everyone a heads up beforehand. But I've just recently come to this conclusion, like I said, just minutes before we met this evening. So I did not have a chance to do that and I apologize for that. But at this point, I don't think I can be in favor of the 11 cent increase. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Robbins, and thank you for those heartfelt comments. Any other concerns? Quentin, I see trustee Phillips, I see you moving. Any, any?
Oh, simply moving, no.
Say I'm trying to keep up.
Appreciate it, you're doing a good job, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll ask Clint Bond if we have any public speakers.
Vice president Jackson, we have no speakers enrolled.
And then at this time, we will close our public hearing and we will move on to action agenda items. And our number A, our letter A is discussion and action to approve ordinance fixing and levying the school district ad valorem taxes.
Madam board president, if I may just ask a quick question to Mr. Bond. Nobody signed up for public comment either, Mr. Bond, did they?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Toby, can I make a quick, so earlier I said that we had lost $45 million in funding. That was wrong, it was 45% of our federal funding since 2015. I just want to make that clarification, don't want to put information out there.
Thank you. So tonight's first action, gen item is discussion and action to approve ordinance fixing and levying school district ad valorem taxes. Do I have a motion?
Ashley Paz, so move.
Have a motion by trustee Paz on the floor, we need a second.
Chief Phillips, I second.
Trustee Paz has made the motion, trustee Phillips has seconded. At this time, I'll ask, do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll go through and call each member for a vote. Trustee District Three, Quentin Phillips.
Yes.
Trustee District Four, Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
Trustee District Five, CJ Evans.
No.
Trustee District Six, Dar.
Yes.
Trustee District Seven, Norman Robbins.
No.
Trustee District Eight, Anael Luabanos. Trustee District Nine, Ashley Paz.
Yes.
And I am vice president Toby Jackson and my vote is a yes as well. So the motion passes with five yays and two nays. Is that correct, Mr. Castillo?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam, madam vice president, this is Mike Ball. I believe there is some emotion language that the law requires the motion to be made in accordance with that language. Mr. Castillo, am I, am I off base on that?
No, sir, is the language in the rationale or in the recommendation?
I believe it is.
I don't see it here. If someone would like to text it to me or if someone else would like to say it, what I have is to call for the discussion and action to approve the ordinance. And then to ask for a second, let's, there's a motion.
Yeah, it, it.
And then we move on to B, which is an order calling a voter approval tax ratification election.
Mr. Castillo, is it enough, as the, as the person making the motion, is it enough for me to say that I move for the board of trustees to approve the ordinance as proposed in the presentation we just received by Fort Worth ISD staff?
Yeah, let's do that for right now. And then, and then if we need to revisit it after executive session, we will.
Sounds good, Dave.
I think, I think here's what, let me, let me text this. Because I believe we've got to effectively adopt the tax rate before we, before we go to calling the election. So I'm going to take a picture of what's on the screen and was it, and I can, I can send it to Ms. Mullenar and she can get it to the right person. Will that, will that work?
Yes. Okay.
So, Mr. Castillo, will this motion hold as it's been presented by trustee Paz? Or shall we start the entire process over again?
Let's make an amendment to the motion if that's okay with what Mr. Ball sent over, just to be on the safe side.
That sounds good. If you need water or a break, please take it now.
Better to get it right than have to come back and do it again.
Better to get it right, I'm with it.
I'm with that, too.
Yeah, what's coming is, is in bold in the middle of, what's in the middle of the ordinance has to be included in the motion language.
Will you be sending that to trustee Paz? Or will you be sending?
I've sent it to Ms. Mullenar and I think she has, hopefully she has, Ms. Paz is.
I sent it to trustee Paz.
Good, have it. Thank you, trustee Paz, for your patience.
Bear with me while I read it. I do not have a Fort Worth ISD education, so. So this, do I need to read the entire thing or just the?
No, ma'am, I think it should, the motion should be, I move that the ordinance be adopted as presented this and then read what's involved there in the middle where it says this rate will raise more taxes.
Okay. I, I move that this ordinance shall be, that the ordinance will be approved as presented, that this tax rate will raise more, more taxes for maintenance and operation than last year's tax rate. And the tax rate will effectively be raised by 7.53% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $96.50 per year.
That's it.
That's good?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Paz has a motion. Trustee Phillips, just, just cross my fingers here, could you just give a second again?
I do absolutely second.
Okay, great, shall we go through voting again or will voting hold?
Attorney Castillo. To discuss before we vote?
Sure.
And that is, that tax increase would have to be approved by the voters, correct?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that that's clear, that we are not voting on a tax increase. We are voting on allowing the voters to choose and the opportunity to decide if they want a tax increase.
That's the next, that's the next motion.
That is, that is motion B.
You are adopting the tax rate, trustee Dar, by this action. That it is setting the tax rate to be ratified by the voters in the next action.
Okay.
Attorney Castillo, do our votes hold or shall we go through them again?
Let's do it again, please.
Okay, we have trustee Paz with the motion, trustee Phillips with the second. And I will now go through roll call. District Three, trustee Quentin Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. District Four, trustee Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
District Five trustee CJ Evans.
No.
Thank you. District Six trustee Andar.
Yes.
District Seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No.
Thank you. District Eight trustee Anael Luabanos. District Nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
And I am District Two trustee Toby Jackson. And the motion passes with five yays and two nays. Moving on to B, on your agenda, discussion and action to approve order calling a voter approval tax ratification election. Do I have a motion for the tax ratification election? And before I even ask, is there any other specific language, attorney Castillo, that we need to go through in case trustee Paz makes this motion? I, she's, she's been very patient, but I'm.
Not, not to my knowledge, Mr. Ball, correct, right?
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Between us two, I think we'll get this right.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Ashley Paz, so move.
Thank you, trustee Paz has made the motion, looking for a second, please.
Chief Phillips, I second.
Trustee Phillips has the second. Seeing none, I will go through roll call at this time. District Three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Yes.
District Four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
District Five trustee CJ Evans.
No.
District Six trustee Andar.
Yes.
District Seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No.
District Eight trustee Anael Luabanos. District Nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
And I am District Two trustee Toby Jackson. And it appears that we have five yeses and two nos. Action item C, discussion and action to approve resolution and order for election services for the November 3rd, 2020 Fort Worth ISD voter approval tax ratification election. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
Trustee Paz makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Chief Phillips, I second.
Trustee Phillips has a second, we'll go through, does anyone have any discussion? Let's go through roll call right now. District Three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. District Four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
Thank you. District Five trustee CJ Evans.
No.
District Six trustee Andar.
Yes.
District Seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No.
District Eight trustee Anael Luabanos is still not here. District Nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
And I am Toby Jackson, District Two trustee, I vote yes. Five yeses and two nos. Moving on to D, discussion and action to approve the early college high school calendar for the 2020, 2021 school year. Do I have a motion?
This is Norman Robbins.
Go ahead, Norman.
I'll second, this, Norman Robbins, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion on the floor by trustee Dar and a second from trustee Robbins. Thank you both, any discussion at all? Seeing none, I'll go through roll call for votes. Trustee Quentin Phillips, District Three.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Daphne Brookins, District Four.
Yes.
Trustee CJ Evans, District Five.
Yes.
Trustee Andar, District Six.
Yes.
Trustee Norman Robbins, District Seven.
Yes.
Trustee Anael Luabanos is still absent. District Nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
Thank you. And I am District Two trustee Toby Jackson, my vote is yes as well. The vote is unanimous. Moving on to the discussion on the development of board constraints and constraint progress measures as part of Lone Star Governance. In February of this year, we did some in-depth work with Mr. Dale Latham from Division 11 concerning the board constraints and constraint progress measures, which we will begin to discuss at this time. Doesn't say on the script, but are we taking this into executive session?
And it's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's great. So at this time, we will recess and reconvene in closed meeting for executive session to discuss with Mr. Dale Latham the board constraints and constraint progress measures for Lone Star Governance. See you all on the other side, thank you. Opened the workshop at precisely 5:30 PM in a private video conference with a quorum present. Recessed and reconvened, opened session virtually, adjourned regular session, convened executive session. convened executive session, adjourned executive session, and now we have reconvened an open session at precisely 8:43 PM in the public virtual video conference with a quorum present. The trustees who are present virtually are, and I will go through roll call. District one trustee President Jacinto Ramos.
I'm present.
Thank you. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Present.
Thank you. District four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Present.
District five trustee CJ Evans.
Present.
Thank you. District six trustee Andar.
Present.
Thank you. District seven trustee Norman Robbins.
Present.
District eight trustee Aniel Luabanos had a medical emergency and he will not be at this meeting. District nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Present.
Thank you. I thought you were. Uh, and I am district two trustee Toby Jackson, and I, first vice president Jackson, am indeed present. At this time, we will return to some of the action items that were considered before we adjourn to executive session. There may have been some confusion as we repeated the motion and the vote on a few of the items. Ms. Paz, do you have a motion?
Yes, I would like to move that we can reconsider my previous motion. Um, give me just a second and I will, and I will read it. That Fort Worth ISD's tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operation than, operations than last year's rate and the tax rate will effectively be raised by 7.53% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $96.50.
Thank you trustee Paz. Do we have a second?
You Phillips, I second.
Thank you trustee Phillips.
Madam President, uh, this is Mike Ball.
I'm going back.
If, if we could read that motion verbatim, I, it still I think needs to state the title.
Mr. Ball, hold on, uh, uh, Ms. Paz, just for clarification, your motion was to reconsider item 4A, uh, approve ordinance fixing and levying school district ad valorem taxes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Phillips seconded that motion to reconsider. So now at this time, we vote on the motion to reconsider before the actual item is on the table.
Right. Okay. At this time, is there any discussion? This time, we will go through roll call. The motion is on the table with trustee Paz moving and trustee Phillips second. With no discussion, I'll call district one trustee Jacinto Ramos Jr. Any discussion?
No discussion, sorry.
I'm sorry. District three trustee Quentin Phillips, any discussion?
No discussion.
District four trustee Daphne Brookins, any discussion?
No discussion.
District five trustee CJ Evans, any discussion?
No discussion.
District six trustee Andar, any discussion?
No discussion.
District seven trustee Norman Robbins, any discussion?
No discussion.
District nine trustee Ashley Paz, any discussion?
No discussion.
Thank you. Trustee Toby Jackson, at this time, and I have no discussion, at this time, we can please move to voting. And we will be voting on the motion to reconsider action item 4A, approve ordinance fixing and levying school district ad valorem taxes. And just for the public to know, only a member who voted in favor of the item may make the motion and second it, and trustee Paz has done so. We will now go through roll call for the votes. District one trustee Jacinto Ramos Jr.
I vote yes.
Thank you, President Ramos. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Yes.
Just, thank you. District four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
Thank you. District five trustee CJ Evans.
No.
Thank you. District six trustee Andar.
Yes.
Thank you. District seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No.
Thank you. District nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
Thank you. And I, Toby Jackson, district two trustee, vote yes. This motion passes 6, 4, 2 against. It's now been passed by majority of the board, so now the item is back up for reconsideration. We need a trustee to make a motion on that same item. Do I have a motion from any trustee?
Uh, yes, uh, madam vice president, Ashley Paz, I would like to move, uh, that we, that the board, um, approve fixing and levying the Fort Worth ISD ad valorem taxes, um, tax rate to raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate and that the tax rate will effectively be raised by 7.53% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $96.50 per year.
Madam Chair, uh, madam chair Jackson, uh, the, the motion that needs to be read is, is statutorily required. We have it in the script, uh, I don't know, trustee Paz, could we send that to you?
It, yes, but it wasn't really, it's not the way that.
Yes, let me, let me get it to you real quick.
Okay, everybody, we're gonna hold for a second. Trustee Paz, we're gonna wait for you to receive the motion. Uh, trustee Paz will then read the motion. Is that correct, attorney Castillo?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh wait, okay, I, I have it, I think.
Oh good.
Okay. I was, I was looking for the wrong thing. Okay. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.3784 cent. No wait, I'm sorry. A dollar 3784, which is effectively a 7.53% increase and that I further move that the ordinance fixing and levying school district ad valorem taxes for the year 2020 be approved as presented.
Thank you trustee Paz. Trustee Paz has made the motion and she has read the motion. Attorney Castillo, is everything correct at this point?
We are good to go. Mr. Ball, do you concur? All right.
Okay, I would love to hear a second from someone.
You Phillips, I second.
Thank you. Trustee Ashley Paz has moved, trustee Phillips has seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. I'll go through a call to make sure that there is no discussion. District one trustee, President Jacinto Ramos Jr., any discussion?
No discussion.
Thank you. District three trustee Quentin Phillips, any discussion?
No discussion.
Thank you. District four trustee Daphne Brookins, any discussion?
No discussion.
Thank you. District five trustee CJ Evans, any discussion?
No discussion.
District six trustee Andar, any discussion?
No discussion.
District seven trustee Norman Robbins, any discussion?
No discussion.
District nine trustee Ashley Paz, any discussion?
No discussion.
Thank you. And I am district two trustee Toby Jackson, I do not have any discussion. We will now move to voting. As I call your name again trustees, please say yes or no. District one trustee, President Jacinto Ramos Jr.
Yes.
Thank you. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. District four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
District five trustee CJ Evans.
No.
Thank you. District six trustee Andar.
Yes.
Thank you. District seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No.
Thank you. District nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
Thank you. And I am district two trustee Toby Jackson, and I vote yes, and the motion passes 6, yes, 2, no. I'd like to entertain a motion to reconsider item 4B, approve order calling a voter approval tax ratification election, remembering that only a member who voted in favor of the item may make the motion and second. Do I have a motor, a, a motion from one of those on the prevailing side?
Madam President, this is Ashley Paz, and I move to reconsider item 4B, approve the order calling a voter approved tax ratification election.
Thank you trustee Paz. Do we have a second?
You Phillips, I second.
Thank you trustee Phillips. I'll now go through roll call to ensure that if we have discussion, that we indeed have discussion. District one trustee, President Jacinto Ramos Jr.
No discussion.
Thank you sir. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
No discussion.
District four trustee Daphne Brookin, oh thank you. District four trustee Daphne Brookin.
No discussion.
This, thank you. District five trustee CJ Evans.
No discussion.
District six trustee Andar.
No discussion.
District seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No discussion.
District nine trustee Ashley Paz.
No discussion.
And I am Toby Jackson, district two trustee, and I have no discussion. We are gonna move to voting. As I call your name trustees, play, please say yes or no. District one trustee, Board President Jacinto Ramos Jr.
Yes.
Thank you. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. District four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
Thank you. District five trustee CJ Evans.
No.
Thank you. District six trustee Andar.
Yes.
Thank you. District seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No.
Thank you. District nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
Thank you. And I am district two trustee Toby Jackson, I vote yes. The vote is 6, 4, and 2 against. Now we need a board member to make a motion on that same item. Do I have a motion?
Uh, madam vice president, I move to approve the order calling for a voter approved tax ratification election.
Thank you trustee Paz, and do I have a second?
You doing a good job Ashley, I second.
Second, moved by trustee Paz, seconded by trustee Phillips. We'll move through the roll call to see if there's any discussion. District one trustee, Board President Jacinto Ramos Jr.
No discussion.
Thank you. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
No discussion.
Thank you. District four trustee Daphne Brookins.
No discussion.
Thank you. District five trustee CJ Evans.
No discussion.
Thank you. District six trustee Andar.
No discussion.
Thank you. District seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No discussion.
Thank you. District nine trustee Ashley Paz.
No discussion.
Thank you. And I am district two trustee Toby Jackson, I have no discussion. We will now move to voting. As I call your name trustees, say yes or no or abstain. District one trustee, Board President Jacinto Ramos Jr.
Yes.
Thank you. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. District four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
Thank you. District five trustee CJ Evans.
No.
Thank you. District seven trustee, district six trustee Andar.
Yes.
Thank you. District seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No.
Thank you. District nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
Thank you. And I am district two trustee Toby Jackson, I vote yes. The motion passes 6, 4, 2 against. I foresee, I'd like to entertain a motion to reconsider item 4C, approve resolution and order for election services for the November 3rd, 2020 Fort Worth ISD voter approval tax ratification election, remembering that only a member who voted in favor of the item may make the motion and the second. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, this is Ashley Paz. I move to reconsider item 4C, approve resolution and order for election services for the November 3rd, 2020 Fort Worth ISD voter approval tax ratification election.
Thank you trustee Paz. We have a motion on the floor from trustee Paz. May we have a second?
You Phillips, I'll second.
Thank you trustee Phillips. I'll now go through roll call to make sure, uh, if anyone has any discussion. District one trustee, President Jacinto Ramos Jr.
No.
Thank you. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
No discussion.
District four trustee Daphne Brookins.
No discussion.
District five trustee CJ Evans.
No discussion.
District six trustee Andar.
No discussion.
Trustee Norman Robbins.
No discussion.
District eight trustee, I'm sorry, district nine trustee Ashley Paz.
No discussion.
And I am Toby Jackson, district two trustee, I have no discussion. We will now move to voting. As I call your name trustees, please say yes, no, or abstain. District one trustee, Board President Jacinto Ramos Jr.
Yes.
Thank you. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. District four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
Thank you. District five trustee CJ Evans.
No.
Thank you. District six trustee Andar.
Yes.
Thank you. District seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No.
Thank you. District nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
Thank you. And I am Toby Jackson, district two trustee, and I vote yes. The motion passes 6, 4, 2 against. Now we need a board member to make a motion on that same item. Do I have a motion?
Uh, madam vice president, this is Ashley Paz. I move to approve the resolution and order for election services for the November 3rd, 2020 Fort Worth ISD voter approval tax ratification election.
Thank you trustee Paz. Trustee Paz has moved. May we have a second?
You Phillips, I'll second.
Thank you trustee Phillips. I'll now go through roll call to see if there's any discussion. District one trustee, Board President Jacinto Ramos Jr. I believe that was no discussion. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
No discussion.
District four trustee Daphne Brookins.
No discussion.
Thank you. District five trustee CJ Evans.
No discussion.
District six trustee Andar.
No discussion.
District seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No discussion.
District nine trustee Ashley Paz.
No discussion.
And I am district two trustee Toby Jackson, I have no discussion. As I call your name trustees, please say yes, no, or abstain to the vote. Once again, moved by trustee Paz and seconded by trustee Phillips. District one trustee Jacinto Ramos Jr.
Yes.
Thank you. District three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. District four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
Thank you. District five trustee CJ Evans.
No.
Thank you. District six trustee Andar.
Yes.
Thank you. District seven trustee Norman Robbins.
No.
Thank you. District nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
Thank you. And I am Toby Jackson, district two trustee, and I vote yes. The motion passes 6, 4, and 2 against. At this time, the time is 9:02 PM and we are indeed adjourned.
We did it everyone, good job.